Meeting of the Somerville Planning Board for June 11th, 2025 will please come to order. Adequate notice of this meeting, as required by the Open Public Meeting Act, has been provided. A copy of the notice specifying the date, time, and location was one, published to the Courier-News, two, posted on the bulletin board outside of Borough Hall, three, posted to the municipal website, and four, given to the Clerk Administrator. This meeting is a judicial proceeding.
Give me one second.
Any questions or comments must be limited to the issues the Board may legally consider in reaching a decision, and the decorum appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. Roll time, roll call.
Andrea Dares excused, Chris Addicks.
Here.
Art Aikens.
Here.
Larry Cleveland.
Here.
Jason Kraska.
Here.
John Manilio.
Here.
Barry Van Horn.
Here.
Mayor Gallagher will be here shortly. Councilmember of the room is excused. Chairperson Warner.
Here. Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we need a motion for approval for the minutes from May 28th.
So moved.
Second.
Chris Addicks.
Yes.
Larry Cleveland.
Yes.
Jason Kraska.
Yes.
John Manilio.
Yes.
Barry Van Horn.
Yes.
Chairperson Warner.
Yes. All right, we have our resolution for the 2025 Housing Element and Fair Share Plan. This resolution is going to...
It's...
Basically memorialize. Basically memorialize the action that we took in the last meeting.
So moved.
Uh, Kraska, second.
I'll second.
Manilio.
Chris Addicks.
Yes.
Larry Cleveland.
Yes.
Jason Kraska.
Yes.
John Manilio.
Yes.
Barry Van Horn.
Yes.
Chairperson Warner.
Yes. All right, um, I do not want to go to the concept review first. I want to skip a little bit real quick. We had two ARB applications that came through, that went through, just for your awareness. One was for a sign on 76 West Main Street, and the other one was for a dumpster corral enclosure on 2 West Main Street. So you have those for your awareness. Um, sorry, let me get my stuff together.
Lisa, I had a question about the corral dumpster.
Yes.
It seemed quite elaborate. Is the rest of the building going to look like that also?
I hope so.
We can only hope. We can only hope.
It was nice.
It really is. I'm like, oh, what's this?
Okay. Hey, Mike, do you want to start really quick so we have some time?
Absolutely.
Let's do the deck one, real quick.
You want to do both?
Yeah, we'll do both, but we'll start with the deck one.
Okay, I'm, uh... Thank you. It's the same thing. No, it's different. What you have is the deck, the deck, and based on the subcommittee that John and I attended, came up with some, uh, simple solutions based on John's comment on intensity of use. That's right, John. We credit you for that. So what you have in front of you is deck ordinance, which I do believe Cara drafted this content. He was just taking the pool or taking out of the ordinance to leave just the decks as... To refresh the Board, this is what the, um, the Board recommended about four or five months ago. So you have, that's the same ordinance with the example, just minus the pools. And the other one is that proposed amendment to, uh, the land use ordinance regarding when you apply a change of use. At, uh, June 3rd, we had a Zoom meeting on the subcommittee. I guess it was about improvement coverage and bulk standards. And, uh, John said intensity of use, and I'm like, oh, keep it simple. So I went back and took another look at this, and the simplest way is to handle the conversion issue that we had talked about, and we had talked about landmark and overlay zoning. And, uh, what resonated was something that John said, to keep it simple for the zoning officer and to keep it simple for anyone to understand. So this would allow for the conversion back to a single family and the R1, R2, or POR without triggering a change of use, which is a nice way of saying whatever's there can remain. There is no trigger. So I thought this was a low-hanging fruit, an easy way to handle that aspect of it. And, uh, that's the first bite at it. What you have in front of you is three sentences that just talks about when you apply a change of use, as opposed to going through certificate, the non-conforming uses, expansions, all that. We just eliminate that by saying there's no trigger.
So...
Sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Please.
So I just want to clarify. So most of the issues that we were seeing in that, specifically really that POR zone, were being triggered because it was technically a change of use, going from that professional... For most of them, it seems to be going from that professional use to that single resident.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. So this would say that if you're going to a, and this back on John said, which I, I really like, is if you're going to a less intense use, you're essentially not triggering the change of use. In this case, it's the single family going from a multi-family or a professional office back to a single family.
Now, does this also help address issues if they are trying to do updates to the, uh, property and they're going for, they need construction permits and then going to that CO issue, where then now there might be non-compliant because they have gravel, not enough?
Doesn't impact the construction office at all. It's not... There's no trigger, so the zoning is going to say it's conforming with the zones in terms of use.
And that actually was, and that's my point I was going to make. I think we should put, just at the tail end of that, for purposes of this section of the ordinance. So no one can turn around and use this to say for anything else that these are not changes in use. So just for purposes of this section of the ordinance, because let's face it, if you're going from commercial to residential, it is a change in use on, on its face. But for purposes of this section, we're not deeming it to be a change in use. So I think that'll help with any potential concerns that you might be worried about.
The wrestle has been, you have bulk standards, and over time, right? The planning, the Cox MLUL will say, over time, you should have the properties try to meet that conformance. So we have properties that have been around for 100 years, 150 years. So how do you allow what's there to remain? So what Cara said, I think the easiest way is to say there's no trigger. Therefore, it would remain. So those are the two things. I'm sure more to follow, but this is just based on the one... What was that, an hour, John? We had the webinar for the Zoom call? Not a webinar, Zoom call by now?
Yeah, it was about an hour. Um, so I'm just thinking, should it be in this section or should it be... There's also the other section with the non-conforming uses.
Right, but you don't have to even touch it if you do it here.
Well, I guess my question is, so on this section, let's say I want to convert from, uh, commercial to residential, right? But at the same time, I want to put a shed up. Is that a zoning permit or this preclude it from going for a zoning permit?
You'd still need a zoning permit, okay? It's still not, it's just saying... It's saying that the change of use, you're not looking at the bulk standards. If you're still coming in for a deck, a pool, a shed, an addition, you still have to meet the bulk standards in the zone.
Okay, and I guess that's what I'm getting at, is with some of these properties, right? Especially going from that resi... I'm sorry, commercial to residential, and then they want to make some improvements because now it's back to a residential, but let's say it's all paved, it's all...
Yeah.
The minute they try to do anything to improve that property back to a residential, they're now going to get themselves backed into a corner because, well, you don't have, you have too much impervious surface, you don't have enough... So I guess that's part of, I love this, I think this is a great start. I think this is the... But I also want to make sure that it only, it's not only solving one portion of the problem for the residents.
It's the low-hanging fruit, which being is, I agree, it's not the full gamut, but I think it's a good start in terms...
No, I think it was a great start.
Clearing things up, it's just, it's the step that I thought was easy to write and research this.
Yeah.
Uh, as we talk about the bulk standards and the issues you bring up, that takes a lot more time. So to keep the ball rolling, I thought we just whittle away at this. And I thought this was a good first step at whittling away at.
Could these additional pavements just be considered pre-existing conditions?
That's, and that's what I think we need to have that discussion on, is what, what in this now? Okay, we've addressed the one thing, right? But then what do we consider that you shouldn't be penalized because it's a pre-existing condition? So I think that's that second piece of it that we just need to capture. And I, and I, I want to be clear, I'm not saying that you should get a carte blanche, be able to do whatever you want with your properties on this, and everything's just pre-existing. But I think we do need to realistically look at what people are trying, or potentially could be trying to do with some of these properties that may have commercial conditions, right? Because they were a commercial property before, what, no matter what it was, usually a professional office building, right? They didn't care about grass, they didn't care about anything. They paved over it because they were allowed to, because they weren't worried about impervious surface or anything in a residential, right? So with that, I think we just want to make sure if they go back and now they're not... This takes care of the one piece, and we're not just saying, all right, but everything else, you're back on your own. And they still have, we've only solved one portion of the problem for the conversions.
Yeah, I think it's...
Let's say your improvement coverage is over. But if you're going to put a shed on top of the existing improvement, you're not increasing that.
Correct.
So if you do have a lot of improvement that doesn't exceed it, if you're going on top of it, you being addition, being a shed, it doesn't increase the improvement. So that wouldn't trigger a variance relief.
It shouldn't, but I think it does.
But I think it still does.
Yeah.
Yes.
I don't think it does. My understanding, talking with the zoning officer, is exactly that. If you have a parking lot, you want to put a shed on top of the parking lot.
Well, so what's this?
As long as the shed complies with the setbacks, it's already on an improvement coverage.
So would an addition count as the same thing? Because it was already paved and I want to put a two-story addition all the way to the property line?
You're not increasing, you're not increasing impervious coverage.
It's a different story, it's setbacks, but if we have issues where the improvement coverage is over, six-car parking lot, it's over, whatever. If you're proposing something that's on top of the existing condition, impervious improvement coverage, it doesn't count because it's already, you're on top of it. You're not adding to improvement coverage.
Don't let me spell that out.
And I, I think that, yeah. That's the next... I don't, I don't want to kick it too far down the road because I think that is something that is holding some of these potential properties, right? So I'm not saying, and I don't want to take away, because this, I think, was the most amazing start of like, hey, this took care of a lot of it, right? But I think some of that other higher hanging fruit, now that we've gotten that low hanging, I don't, when I say push it down, you know, I think that's the next step. And I think, you know, we can ask, um, the, Ryan and them to say, hey, listen, with stuff that's come in, what are some of the conditions? And then, because then I think here, first the committee, then we can decide what do we want to say is considered pre-existing? And what do we want to say, yeah, no, that's a little extreme, that's not going to be considered that, you know, you'd still have to go through proper channels. Like hence, we don't, maybe we decide you still can't, you know, you can't put an addition all the way to the property line. Or you can't put an addition, you know, to the setbacks. You have to, you know, we, we want something, so... And I think that's that last step, but to your point, it does take a little bit more research because I want to figure out and make sure, we might not be able to catch everything, but I know that there are some issues that are glaring right now for a lot of property owners there. And if we can gather some of those to make sure that they can proceed and, you know, with what they may want to do and/or do go through with the conversion. Because maybe right now, they're just not going to do it because of the stumbling blocks.
I understand it completely. I was just looking at this, that we had on June 3rd. I got this out on Friday, it's a Wednesday.
I know, you called me the next day, I was like, what?
Uh, just, I really liked what John said because it resonated to keep it as simple as possible. And I think, I think that's the right approach for this avenue. Yes, it's probably not going to be this clean to address some of the bulk standards. But just to keep the ball rolling, I, I agree, I understand that. I didn't want to lose the meeting.
No, I, I think this is what we wanted.
The charge was to keep every meeting productive as possible.
Yes, it is.
So that's why you see, um, as we come out with stuff, if everybody's comfortable with it, we'll just keep rolling the next meeting.
Yep.
The deck one, I love.
Yeah, I think the deck one...
I think the separation of that is perfect, that we should push that up to council.
Essentially what Cara did, I just modified and picked the pool out. So a lot language is what Cara did from four or five months ago. And I do have, switching gears, but on the subterranean basement apartment issue, you had charged me with looking at that. I've not quite done it, but just so the planning board knows, the IRC, which is the residential code, which covers one and two-family dwellings, and the IVC, National Building Code, which covers multi-family, states that you need 8% natural light. And you do the calculation based on the square footage of the room. So every room needs 8%, but the rehab code is, I'm still drilling down on that because the rehab code doesn't say that. So rehab code being, you have an existing building and you want to convert the basement to apartment. What do you have to do for the building code? It's not going to be the IRC or the IVC because it's not new construction. What it's going to be done is the rehab code comes in and it picks and chooses back to the sections of the IRC that are applicable. So the bottom line is, I don't, there's three avenues here. You have the rehab code, the existing structures, and new constructions. You have the IRC and the IVC.
So I'm just going to ask a question, and this is just hypothetical, but wondering, if we wanted to make a recommendation, if we felt we just don't want apartments, can we just make that recommendation without having to go through all this?
That was good. We could, but I was just trying to get the Board all, because all the different avenues on this from a building.
And the reason I ask, I'm sorry, real quick. The reason I ask is because if that is the overall feeling of the planning board based on what we want as a permitted use within the borough, then no need for you to continue. If there are Board members and the Board wants to see every option, I'm okay with that. I just don't want you to have to do anything extra if really the overall consensus is we really would prefer no apartments in sub-levels.
Right, I want to have a package for this planning board, just so you guys get a sense. One of the snafus is to make sure whatever the Board approves, that can be built without having an issue with the construction code issues.
Are there going to be definitions of the height of the ceiling in a basement apartment?
I'm almost there on this issue. I'm saying I'll have the information for the Board the next planning board meeting.
All right, so we'll dive into it.
You're absolutely right. You don't need this information to make a recommendation, but I thought the charge was to, to leave no stone unturned, to make sure that we're looking at everything here and part of the consideration.
What would the fire department think about this? Because if you have to have two ways out, on the first floor, you can jump out a window. In the basement, you got to climb up into the casement window to get out?
So there are a lot of concerns overall from the perspective of basement apartments, right? Because it's, technically, it's not yours. You're renting it out at somebody else's. This is not just, hey, you're revamping your basement for, you know, you're going to start using it in game room, right? It is an actual apartment, it is somebody else's, you're renting it out. That's what we're looking at. So yes, to that point, that is part of the concern, is what are the requirements then that would happen from that ingress, egress, and safety perspective?
Yeah.
Yeah, my, my personal, I mean, to Lisa's point earlier, I, I think we should be making, you know, the recommendation of no basement apartments being allowed to be constructed. So I, I don't think, from my point, I don't, you know, not that I don't care about the heights and stuff. I don't care if it's seven foot or eight foot, I, I still don't think they should have.
Yeah, no, but I'm just thinking about...
An apartment in a basement that's trapping them.
I'm just thinking about the apartments that I've been in over the years. I worked for the phone company and going into some of these apartments in Elizabeth that were sketchy at best, and you're ducking your head underneath pipes and other things, but it's an apartment to somebody that are living down there. Whether it's legal is another story. In my basement, ceiling's not high enough for seven foot. But could I have somebody living down there? Maybe me one day, maybe. But in the meantime, it can happen.
Just get the Board the information. Whether or not it makes any bearing on the recommendations is up to the Board. Let me just, I'm almost there.
Okay, we'll put it on for next, next meeting, but I just want everybody to be clear that we, we have the option. We want the facts, but we have that option.
Absolutely.
We're not trying to push anybody in a direction of saying, hey, we got to figure out a way to make it permissible.
And on that, in spirit of keeping things moving, you have an annual report of zoning decisions.
Yes.
In your package, and you say, what is this about? Every year, an annual report of zoning decisions from the plan, from the Board of Adjustment is prepared. It goes out to both Boards with a map that Ryan put together that shows you where the Board of Adjustment's land use applications were at. And they continue to be scattered, there's no one zoning district. You see it's all over the place, um, and you'll see that most of them are in the residential zone districts. But there's some, some, there's professional and some, some commercial applications that are in the POR, the banks and so forth. But still, you see that, and you'll see the data going back to 2006, just for the Board's knowledge in looking at land use, that you have the annual report.
And, and report, these kind of reports, just so everybody's aware, are really important as we start to look at master plan, as we start to looking at zoning, because these help us to dictate what some of our decisions, or maybe some of the things that we want to adjust. Because if they are constantly having to go for variances, it's something that, is there a reason for it? Is it just because we've never looked at it, never realized it? And so, you know, the, this report every year had been always very extremely beneficial, especially at the time when we're going to begin to look at making some adjustments to things.
Yeah, so the planning board has it. If anybody has questions in the next meeting, we can bring it up. And also, about four or five years ago, I combined them all, '06, in one PDF, if anybody would like to see. The one benefit I have is the, I go back to '06 with this report, so I can...
I don't think that would be a bad thing to set, to get out to the Board to review.
You see it over time, over the last 19 years, what's been going on. It just gives you, I think, more vision. So you're not, you're looking at not post-COVID, Greek COVID, you're looking at the whole gamut.
If you have it digital, I think it'd be great to see.
Yeah.
I can make, I can do it in a PDF and get it to Ryan. I can just combine all of them in the PDF and get it out to the Board.
Did the zoning Board make any recommendations to council based on these? Or they haven't gotten to that point yet?
Having gotten to that point, there was discussions earlier this year that have a joint meeting because the Board of Adjustment would like to discuss some plan use with the planning Board. But that was talked from about four, I don't know if it happens this year, but the Board would like to do things, the Board of Adjustment would like to do it in concert with the planning Board.
Yeah.
Because that makes a lot more sense, in my opinion. So that's on the back burner, but I can certainly get Ryan the PDF of all the annual reports from '06 to 2024.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful.
Okay, and the other thing is, I'm just switching gears.
Yep.
If you're good with that, is you have the model stormwater ordinance here. Now, I've briefly looked at this, and I do believe it's the template right through DEP. I do believe the DEP allows municipalities to be more stringent. But based on this, I think this is the template that's given out by DEP for municipalities. That's how, I don't, the standards in here are what DEP's regulations state. The town can be more stringent on improvement coverage definitions, but I don't see that because I see this being what the template is from DEP. Barry, do you agree with that? Or John, you, I know you haven't looked at it, but it's the appendix.
Yeah, most towns don't adopt it as is, most towns go a little higher, so we can take a look at that.
Something that I think it's, came to us, my understanding, Ryan, is that correct? From council introduced this for adoption, so it came to the Board for comment, is that...
I believe so, but I'm not 100% correct either.
Okay, we might have some time if anybody wants to drill through this, Barry, John. But I think it's just a template. I spent maybe an hour reading it all with this today, but I, from what I gather, I think it's just a template.
I think there's a more of current one.
Yeah, so I, I believe the Environmental Commission has taken a stab at this and, and made some changes and some recommendations.
We did.
We have not done that yet, no.
We haven't submitted.
We haven't.
I think you might have submitted it.
What are you talking about, environmental or us?
Environmental.
Oh, that hat, okay. I just need, we couldn't figure out what hat you were talking about.
He, he pointed at me.
Yeah, sorry, environmental. Um, I believe they, they made some recommendations and some updates, and we were just waiting for a red line from them to see what the above and beyond items from them would be.
We can certainly, if we can reach out and get a copy of that, we can certainly discuss that. If the Board would like to discuss it the next meeting.
I know Kevin's got a copy with the Environmental Commission's markups on it, but he didn't give it to me. He told me to bring this one tonight, so I'll get in touch with him.
I was going to say, can you get that and then maybe get that circulated just to give us an, an idea of what their, direction they're going in?
Will do.
Yeah.
I had a question about the Board of Adjustment letter.
Yeah.
Did they have any denials? There are 10 or 11 approvals, but did they ever deny anything and say, no, we can't do that?
If it's not, I don't have the report in front of me, all the approvals, the application should be there. I don't...
Well, this could also tie in with, maybe we do need to sit down with them so we can understand some of the things that they're doing and understand what we're looking at so that we don't have a disagreement about where we're going.
On this, in 2024, everything that the Board heard was approved, it was in denial. If you look at the approval denial, I'm not saying it has standards. Obviously, every case is viewed on its own merits. But if you're looking at policies, make sure they're consistent between the Boards, I think that's a great idea. And I think they are consistent, but I think it should be thoroughly vetted. Obviously, the Board wants to...
I just think there've been some surprises. There've been some surprises, that things that maybe we would not have done, that they went, they said yes to. And I get it that they're a different Board, but we need to be moving in the same direction.
In 2023, there was a lot, it was a two-family flood hazard. There was a use variance in front of the Board. The Board denied it because this is the default process, is putting first responders and people in the flood hazard zone. This is right off of Fourth Street. So I'm just giving you the example off the top of my head, it's a denial. But I think that a joint meeting would clear the air. I think the policies are very similar because I...
So am I.
I can tell you that it's not, what the Board's thought process for adjustment, the planning Board, is very, very similar. But I think a joint meeting would be helpful just to make sure that it's all aligned to the extent possible.
Yeah.
Every question that I get from somebody from the public is about something that we didn't do. Ah, you people at the planning Board, whoa, whoa, whoa. No, we never heard that one. And then I find out, oh, that was, that was from the Board of Adjustment, and I go, it's not us. So then, but you have to explain.
Yes.
Why did they approve a building on the corner across from middle school? That three-story, whatever that is.
Yes.
You know, or, you know, there's other places. There's a building going up on Mid-All that is questionable. I got nothing but heartache and grief on that.
Yes.
Wasn't us. And, you know, so I'm just saying that if we're all talking about the same thing, then maybe they can understand where we're coming from. When we would say no, they got to give a better reason to say yes just because. That doesn't work.
Yeah.
Doesn't work for us, shouldn't work for them.
Right, no, and I, I do think it's been time, it's been a while since we've done a joint meeting where we've had these discussions, so it's definitely time to reinvigorate. And again, especially because we're going to be evaluating and examining the master plan and rezoning, you know, updating our zoning. So it's definitely timely to have that, that meeting, you know. If, and I can work through Ryan, and we can try to, you know, come up with some solid dates that we would be able to do that so that we can get it on the calendar, you know.
Right.
Do you have any? So...
It's just on the list.
No, so I was just going to say, do we want to make a recommendation to at least the decks?
Yes.
Push that up to council? So we're moving something up to them? I don't think we formally did that yet.
No, we can do that.
So I'd make a motion that for the amending chapter 102-4... So I'd make a motion that for the amending chapter one oh two dash four regarding just the decks with the separation of the pools out of it and left out completely as a recommendation up to the council.
I need a second.
I'll second.
Or not.
Chris Addicks.
Yes.
Larry Cleveland.
Yes.
Jason Kroska.
Yes.
John Manilio.
Yes.
Barry Van Horn.
Yes.
Chairperson Warner.
Yes.
Art Aikens.
Yes.
I'm gonna hit the top button. E V charging stations.
Yes, I.
No, guys, I'm not letting it go, sorry.
I thought the homework assignment was to the board to come up with some ideas for this meeting.
So I'm actually gonna ask the board. What are the board's thoughts on what you were looking at and what you're ultimately thinking for E V charging stations in a deck, whether enclosed and or open?
So I'll start.
Go ahead.
The, um, my, my, my personal opinion, I know we went back and forth a lot with it. I would prefer to see them outside on surface parking, any of the E V charging stations. For the safety of our first responders, first and foremost, and then for building, structure and everything else, fighting the fires. There's a fire, we're missing a guy tonight because he's fighting a fire, nothing to do with E V. But, you know, we, we have to look at what our first responders are gonna deal with and how they deal with it. So while I understand the state has a mandate of fifteen percent on property, there's nothing that says it has to be in a parking deck. And that is where I personally stand on it.
So I did a little digging. Lisa, Lisa, you're right, there's little data out there, so that's good. So what I did find, I came across some consistent data, and I have little question about the quality around the rate of E V car fires. And it hovered around twenty-five per hundred thousand, right? And I get it, maybe that twenty-five's not the exact number. Let's increase, let's double it, let's times it by ten. Still a small number out of a hundred thousand. So there's a big margin error that could still make the, make what I'm gonna say kinda make sense. So what I didn't find is anything around, and this furthers your point, anything around E V, E V charging stations causing or not causing fires. That said, the rate of occurrence is so low, whether we consider E V, E V chargers the root cause of fires, it's still a low probability. And I was like, let me do, let me do some back and nap in math. I use the computer to do this, because I can only do ten, ten, ten digits. So I said, all right, show me like, what's the, what's the percentage of a chance of a car catching on fire of a hundred thousand cars? Point, point zero two five, right, twenty-five out of a hundred thousand. I said, in a deck, if there's a hundred cars in a deck, E V cars, suppose they're all plugged in, they're all plugged in, they're all a risk, right? How long would it have, how long would it take to definitely have a hundred percent, a hundred percent chance of a fire in that deck? It's a hundred and eighty-four years, okay? So I started looking at it from that perspective, and I said, well, does it really matter whether we have E V chargers as part of this equation or not? Does it actually increase the risk? I don't know. But even if it does, the number is so astronomically low. And I looked, I said, show me some data around hybrids, show me some data around gasoline cars. They were much higher, right? And I know there's different impact between E V and gasoline hybrid fires. So where, where I came to my thought, and Jason, I appreciate your comments, I'm there with you, life safety, first responder safety, is like, I'd like to like, think, and I draw some notes down here, like, the ordinance, rather than saying, well, no E V chargers in decks, maybe only on top, Jason, to your point, I appreciate that. Maybe we look at the ordinance focusing on the mitigation and protection, where we're taking a lot of the stuff from the Avalon, what the experts said there. They put a lot of thought into their protection and mitigation, the structure and people and the flow and how the fire kinda distributes and the time you can get people to safety, right? And also, they consider the first responder, where they place the cars and stuff like that. Then also, I think I agree with the Fire Marshal's letter, except for the first one where it says, don't put the E V chargers in deck. He came up, and I was looking at those both, the, the output, the outcomes of the Avalon hearing and the Fire Marshal, and they were pretty much aligned. I was like, all right, they're, they were rowing in the same direction, which I liked. That was really good. So I think that the, the, the recommendation I'd like to propose is focusing on the requirements for protection mitigation, first responder safety, and then defining the specific requirements and minimum controls for E V chargers, because we heard from our experts, well, the Avalon's experts, that if the chargers are well-designed, the risk of occurrence is extremely low with an issue with a battery, right? And then, um, yeah, and then obviously, and, and then I think coupling that with education and training for fire department, to continue learning how to fight these fires. And then finally, regularly, regularly reevaluate what we decide on. Every year, go back to them, go, hey, is there data? Is it pointing us in the right direction? So that's my thought. I don't think just saying, no E V fires, or put them all on the top deck is the solution.
So, yeah.
Thanks for listening.
No, 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 so, so, and, and just, I just wanna clarify one of my other points.
Yeah.
I, I agree that, you know, the data and everything isn't there. I'm not saying the chargers are the issue of creating it. I'm saying they attract. When you put them in a location, people with E Vs are going to go there. If you don't have them there, they're going to find that other place to go and charge it where it's.
So like.
I don't wanna say a safer place for it to catch on fire, but, you know, I keep using the, uh, the example of the Wawa, right? On twenty-eight, right before you get on two eighty-seven by Home Depot there, they have six E V charging stations in the back. There is a line, eight cars at all times waiting to get there. The gas station across the street doesn't have any. Now, again, not really fair, because it's a gas station. But, you know, you don't have E Vs sitting in the back of it, all clumped together, waiting. So that, that was, that's where my point is. I'm not saying it's the chargers, I, you know, they, they had a very good thing about how it's not the charger, it's the E V that catches the battery, and that's what's hard to put out.
No.
So I just wanted to clarify that, I was not saying it's the charger that.
No, go ahead, I'm tracking.
So I wanna continue this, but our applicant, our concept review here, I shouldn't say applicant, sorry, has been very kind to wait for us. So I wanna break this conversation, we're gonna come back to it after our concept review. So next, we're gonna just go right on to our concept review for East Main Street and Veterans Memorial.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Michael O'Gradyneck, I'm an attorney at Savo Shackle Law Firm here in Somerville, on behalf of the applicant, West Main Street, New Jersey LLC. Just very briefly, we're, of course, here for a conceptual review of the Granite's building for a property, for a project we're calling the Granite's Lofts Rehabilitation. If the board may recall, the township may recall, the site was subject to a prior application for a major site plan for rehabilitation and use change to the existing Granite's building located at two oh one Mess Main, which is in the B two zoning district, where residential retail office uses are permitted. The Granite's building was previously occupied by retail uses on the ground floor, with the remaining three levels partially occupied by offices, a dance studio, fencing studio, spa, driving school, and other office space uses. Parking lot, the building is located to the southwest, southwest of the building with access to the service lot, provided via New Street. Off-site parking is located on the northwest corner of Vet and New Street with access on both frontages. The prior application that we held a series of hearings on proposed interior renovations for residential apartment use on the second, third, and fourth floor, but a use variance for the existing ground floor that was proposed to be used as a senior adult care center. After consideration and discussions with the professionals and the borough, this plan revises the, and removes the senior adult care center use and restores the permitted retail use on the elevation fronting on Main Street. The proposed retail would be in three units. There would be five residential units on the first floor and the rear portion down the side street, all apartments on the upper second through fourth floors. In total, this concept plan proposes fourteen one-bedroom and twenty two-bedroom units, with retail on the entirety of the front elevation consisting of three thousand four hundred and thirty-eight square feet of retail, small leasing and building maintenance office, tenant amenity space on the first floor, course lobby, mail, package rooms, elevator stairwell, and an indoor refuse room. The attached building to the east elevation would main retail on the front and would again be residential, a small unit in the back, and then on the upper floors. With me tonight, I have Joseph Fisher, he's our architect from High Arch Design, to just review the concept plan. We also have Eli Klein, who's the principal, and he can talk about what he does and, and other projects that he's endeavored to undertake. So I would, I've, I've submitted a handout. This is really the, probably the, the first step of this project. We are still a ways away from final site plan engineering. We will need to retain a traffic engineer to redo the traffic plan. We're, I'm assuming we're gonna use Mr. Dean. So that, that's where we, we're here tonight, just to, to kinda give an architectural overview of the concept plan and, and begin, you know, discussions with the borough. So, Mr. Fisher?
Hi, good evening. The Granite's building, as we've, as I've come to, you know, do some research on, and where, and my understanding is this has a significant, significance within the, within the borough. It's almost a gateway, if you wish, coming in from the western portion that you, you chance upon the, you know, the existing building. Unfortunately, the condition that it's in right now is, needs much to be desired, and that's really where we are at this point. You know, and one of the main guiding principles that we have and, that we've approached in this, this concept design was to ensure the significance and the historical, to maintain the historical significance and the architectural detailing, the sense of place. I'm sure that this has, this building evokes. I've been here for, been, standing here for over a hundred thirty years. I'm Sambo map show it for eighteen ninety-five, eighteen ninety, you know, the eastern portion was built in eighteen ninety-five, the rest. I mean, I think this lends the, a need to, as part of this redevelopment or this, this concept, to embrace, rather than replace the building, to embrace the detailing, to embrace the history, to embrace it all. And that's really where we were going, obviously, and, and bring it up to the current, contemporary century. So it's kind of a transitional, you know, design that we were opting for, and we were trying to. So we, as part, I guess I'll walk you through the design, and as part of the design, what we have been trying to. Yeah, I mean, this is, this is the existing building. You can see, I mean, you, you need me to say this, but, you know, the, there's so many, there's so much detail on the building, but then there's sore spots. And what we've, as part of our design, what we've tried to maintain over here was to retain the upper portion, but just give it that extra, you know, that extra addition where it'll help maintain that architectural context. And then on the lower portion, bring in some more additional design where it'll tie the whole entire project together to bring it to this, to this, to today's day and age, but while, all the while, maintaining the sense of place that this, and, and the emotions that it evokes. So as part of our design, I'll go to the upper portion first, and then I'll later on, as I'll explain the exteriors, and then I'll go to, I'll walk you through the project. There is the detailing on the cornice, for example. I mean, that, that detailing is intricate, it's brick detailing, not, we don't, you, you, people today, this day and age, it's usually slapped on. We have to maintain that. But bringing in this, painting it to a color where it ties in with the top and the bottom, and it just gives that newer look, give a fresh coating and a fresh, um, um, you know, coloring or coating to the, to the, to the brick on the exterior facade, maintaining the white color where it's, that's what you've got, you've been seeing for the last, I don't know how many years, and retaining all the detailing around those windows. Adding in additional lighting, bringing in these more modern fixtures where it can, you know, enhance and bring out the architectural beauty, if you wish, of the, of the, of the building itself. Going down to the lower portion, we've introduced a kind of a, a black, you know, stark black band where it separates the two, but it doesn't, you know, but it really, it brings it as one cohesive between the top and the bottom portion coloring. And so, and now going down to the lower, to the, to the, to the street, to the ground level. What we've introduced over here is a mixture, we're, we're proposing a mixture of stucco finishing with more, with, with more contemporary coloring, with more modern, certain, you know, interspersed with, with modern, perhaps wood application within, with, you know, interspersed by the entries. Sleek marquee metal, metal over the, over the entrances, again, delineating those entrances. Introducing this slate blue color where, again, giving it this more contemporary feel, but at the same time, still keeping the whole context together. On the eastern portion, on South Daughtry Avenue, what we've introduced over here on the ground floor, and I'll walk you again through the, the floor plan, but we've introduced in the back portion apartment units over there. But in this design, in order to promote some additional foot traffic there, we've introduced entrances into those apartments, which you can see over here on these two, these two entrances. There are in the, in the existing building, if I can just go back to one image. It's a little difficult to see, but there's actually, the existing windows, window line runs, keeps, keeps on going down. So what we've introduced is maintaining those windows, removing the brick that's covering it up, putting in new windows, having a difference to be, you know, it, it, there is that trim over there, but hiding it so where it does lend a difference between the top and the bottom, it does have that break. And then, what I, what I believe is, this is going to enhance and introduce, and, and, and improve the visual and as well as the, like, as I mentioned, the, the pedestrian foot traffic. At the same time, at the, at the West Main Street facade, we wanted to maintain some retail space. At this, you know, in this design, we literally kept the windows and locations in the same, you know, in the same, in the same locations that they were in. What we did do is we introduced a entrance into the upper portions, into the Granite's lofts to the side of it. There's an elevator shaft and a stair shaft within this tower. So we've introduced a lobby and an entrance over there, creating a new entryway, and I'll, I'll walk you through that. However, I just wanna bring some notes to what we've done on the center portion as well. In the existing conditions, the Granite's, where it says right now Granite's building, it's a, it's, it goes up to the, to the first story, and then you have this big tower, which kind of, in, in my opinion, seems a little out of, you know, it just, it just, the, the scale of it is just a little off with, between the rest of the building. So as such, what we felt is, if we, if we just raise the band up, you know, one level, just that gives a whole, the whole, the whole picture of the building, just gives it extra, you know, added dimension to it. I guess I'm gonna walk you now through, and then we've, this is kind of what we, the way we see it as a night vision. Again, this is going to help revitalize, it's going to help, I mean, the, the building has been vacant, the way I understand it, for quite a while. And I believe this is going to enhance and definitely gonna bring life to the, to the project. Again, this is an existing from, looking from West, West Main Street. And just to note, we have, there's, these are the two buildings over here. Again, from the Sambo maps, this building was at the same time, in eighteen ninety-five. This building and that, and, and the Granite's building were actually at the same time. This little sliver in between has not been there at that, at that point, but it is there now. And so as such, you know, we wanted the main, the, the West Main Street facade to really be a cohesive, cohesive unit between, you know, the two of them. And I, I believe this does connect the whole, you know, and live in the whole exterior. Again, a night vision over here. So let me just bring you now to the, to the, the existing site plan that's there. So currently, there is, um. There are twenty-four spaces within, the, the two, two blocks that are connected to, with this property. The, this main, the main property, I'll call it, is, has twenty-four existing spaces. There was, in the, what I don't have in his images, was over here in the back, but there was a, a ramp and entrance over here. And we've, and as I'll walk you through in the, in the plan, we proposed it in a different location, so there is opportunity to have some more grass and some more, some, some play area within over there. We have, so we have existing twenty-four parking spaces on this property. Currently, there are, I believe, fourteen spaces on the property on West, on Veterans Memorial Drive West. Drive West. That we, we believe we will be able to, once we have, again, the tra, traffic plan is going to be involved, and once we have a real, you know, we do this as a full study, I'm, I'm confident we'll probably be able to get another three, four, four, I, my, my, my initial investigation showed probably four, maybe five, depending, again, we'll have to, we'll have to, you know, review that. Which brings us to a total of most likely about 42 parking spaces. Now, I'm going to walk you now through to the units, or to the floor plans. So like I mentioned before, there is the existing tower in the center over here where this, this existing stair and elevator shaft. We have introduced now this new entrance, this becomes a lobby area. So it's to the left of the, of the entryway, and then once in there, again, you have the retail shown in blue right over here, and in the, the pink area is the two bedrooms and one bedroom units. So the two, the one bedroom units that, the, I'm sorry, the units that I've mentioned are along South Doughty Avenue, where we introduced, you call it brownstone, if you wish, it's not really walk-up, but it's, you know, some entrance, two entrances over there, and that's what you're seeing over behind these two apartments. And then, what I've mentioned, we, we're introducing a new stair shaft where, right now, currently, there is a, there is a second means of egress along South Doughty, this area. By introducing that, we'll be able to get a much better, you know, project over here and it'll be safer as well. And so what we've introduced now is a second, a, moving the ramp from where the current location is to this corner, again, on the property, so it's, you know, just gives, like I said, mentioned before, extra possibility of having some outdoor space for residents. These buildings, I believe right now are not connected to each other fully, and as such, we, we did endeavor to keep that, that way. What we are looking at most likely, possibly retail or leasing space within here, something for the maintenance and stuff like that. And then on the smaller portion, having a retail, and first of all, a possible apartment, one bedroom on the, on the, on the, at the rear. Going down to the typical upper floors, we have, again, a mix of one and two bedroom units. We have for a total of 14 one bedroom, 18 two bedroom, and what we are introducing is within the smaller building, two, 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 two bedroom duplexes, shown in the orange at this corner. So I do believe with this design, again, with the exterior modifications, bringing it in, having tastefully, you know, the, these, these units, even the units are, each of the units are going to have, they're going to have upgraded, you know, material, they're going to be, each of them are going to have washer dryers individually, that's what we're pushing for. I've dealt with the clients before on a different project, and I know them as, they are going to, they, they value the, they appreciate and value the significance of, of a good, tasteful, thought-out, you know, design and good, good product that they, that they produce. So, any questions?
Can you turn your microphone on, please?
You mentioned about the fire escape being removed. Does the inside of the new construction with that second staircase, does that take the place of egress for?
The egress is most, is most definitely compliant, code compliant. Two means of egress over here, no issues on that. The fire escape right now was probably, I don't know if it's from when the building was, two separate buildings or was there for some other reason, again, I didn't study the existing conditions to see how that, you know, we're going, this is going to be a full gut and it's going to be a significant, you know, cost within the project itself. So we, you know, we're really looking at this with fresh eyes, almost as if we're, you know, designing a new building, if you wish, but we're maintaining, while maintaining the exterior and trying to, you know, respect the, the history over here.
I have a secondary question.
Sure.
The building to the west, it's going to be retail on the ground floor?
Yes.
It's going to be to the right of your office spaces?
To the right?
Yeah.
This one?
Right?
Right.
So, there's going to be apartment in the back, a single apartment, and then the two apartments on the second, it's going to be second and third floor together?
Yeah, so let me, let me, let me walk you through that, I appreciate that question. So currently, there is a whole mishmash of fire escapes going on over there within, between the two buildings. So what we are proposing, besides the fire escape that we're removing along South Doughty, we're also proposing removing that whole entire, you know, all those fire escapes, which again, once it's removed, being with, with our design, it is code compliant, it's not an issue. But as far as the smaller building, to the point that you had just, you know, mentioned, so at the first, you come in, what, the way we see it, we, we're coming in along West Main Street, going up to the second story. At that second story, there is now, you're going into within your individual units. Within your individual units, there's going to be staircase to the second, to the next, to the third floor. Again, coming out of, at the, at the second floor, what we are maintaining is the existing fire escape, at the one fire escape that leads you from the roof to the, to the ground level, and that's what we are introducing, that's.
Okay, thank you. And then just one comment, you're going to keep the features above the windows as they exist, but it seems like the white seems to wash it out. I know it's not exactly standing out now, but it seems like it gets washed out, you can't see it, maybe that could be a different accent or slight accent, something to show it.
So I appreciate that. It, it, there may be a little change in color, but what, in all honesty, at one point, we, when we were looking at this, we actually introduced, we tried, you know, we, we tested the waters with painting or using, taking those trims and using that same coloring that we have on the cornice, and, and we just felt it just brings it back to almost a, a much, it's not the contemporary feel that we have. So in this case, while everything is maintained, we're not covering it all up, it's all there, but, you know, and the features are going to be noticeable, even with the color, don't forget, you're looking at it, you know, you're looking, you're looking at this not in, in a 3D sense, you know, you will be, it definitely will be noticeable. But we did want to maintain that, almost that white color, so that would lend to a more contemporary, a more modern look, but transitional between, still maintain all those, you know, detailing.
But those features will still stay?
Oh yeah, we're not, we're not proposing removing any of those features. It's just a question, the coloring, you know, that's, but that's, but as far as the features, the features are all going to be there. Again, this is respecting and trying our utmost to really maintain this, because we, you know, we've really understand that this is the, this is, has a signi, it gives you a sense of place. I mean, this is what you've seen, this, you come in, this is the city, the gateway, it's there. So I think this will be, this will be a significant upgrade to.
Thank you.
I always have something to say.
You're up, sir.
All right, so, so a couple of things. One, overall, beautiful, and I understand this is a concept plan, so, so as much as we pick, it's not, it's not a negative pick, it's a, from my perspective, it's a positive enhancement. I love, I love what you've done with the place. It does, it looks really, really nice, you, you've managed to keep that historical value, but give it a little bit of a modern push to what today's world is demanding. And I like that. It's almost as if the, the outside is still old world, the inside is new world, and, and I think that works well. It's interesting, and I've had this conversation before, and I think for the benefit of the board, one of the questions I had asked in our conversation was, we had somebody come to us initially who had crafted a concept plan, and theirs was, this has to be a teardown. Can you talk a little bit about, you know, the, and I know, you know, it all depends on the professional that you bring in, but, but can you talk to that a little bit? And, and, you know, your experience with, with saving a beautiful structure?
So I'll add to that, it's not just with the professionals, it's with the vision that the developer comes in here and says, oh, it has to be a teardown, because then I can get more, I can get, you know, and we understand that, and we definitely, but this is part of what they were, what, what they, when they approached me, when Mr. Klein approached me, is that we really want to, in the conversation with the board, with, I'm not sure who, you know, the conversation was with, I guess with you and whoever else was, but the, we, the, the historical significance is a necessity, if possible. And as such, I mean, the building, I walked the building, it's going to need a lot of work. It's, it's going to be a full gut, and who knows what we will uncover once, you know, that happens. But at the same time, I've dealt with rehabs, numerous of the, numerous ones, where we've successfully done it, and everything's doable. The building looks fine, and from my initial walkthrough, yes, there's going to have to be a best, abatement, you know, you're going to have to go through a whole bunch of stuff, it's going to be a full gut, it's going, we're going to have to have a structural, and we will have a structural team, you know, review the integrity, and then we will upgrade whatever is necessary to bring it up to code and to, to, to safe and, you know, safe conditions. So there's no doubt about that in my mind. Again, like I say, walking through the, it, it, it's not like I've seen things failing from my initial. If I want to, if, if, if we were trying to that, get that slant of, you know, we're trying to really go for something else, I would say, yeah, this building is, you know, but we're not going there, we're really trying to, to, to work, to, to maintain that. But again, yeah, I mean, I've, I've worked on numerous projects where we've done, I mean, even in Plainfield and Prothamboy and Newark and, I don't know, some, you know, where we've successfully, successfully, successfully done that, so.
Good. I, I do agree with you, moving that, do you call it the cornice, up on the center tower?
Right.
It, it changes the, the massing of it, it changes the scale of it, it's, it does, it changes the feel, it, it shrinks it a little bit, which I think is good. You took to heart the idea of activating South Doughty and putting entrances in there. My only suggestion would be if we can do, if you look across the street, how they handled their entrances, and I know you don't have the same footprint out front, but I think there's, there's some things that can be done, I don't know exactly what, but I think, you know, just to, to soften that street, if that's the right word?
If I may ask, I mean, I appreciate that.
Yeah, go ahead.
We definitely will, we'll, you'll definitely look at that.
Yeah.
But if, can you just be a little more specific about the project? No, I'm referring to, is it, is there, is there any, is it, is it?
So, so I'm going to jump, because that was going to be my one comment, but you're going to steal it, so. Almost like, like I envision, almost like a brownstone feel, like you have something that kind of shows off that it's residential, rather than the same kind of door that you have coming down Main Street. So you know, some kind of walk-up or so, something that differentiates it and gives you that this is a comfortable home feel, rather than business.
So I will address it in this, in this sense.
What he said.
Right, well, I'll address both, both of your comments, unless your comment was a little different than that. The feel in, the way, the way we thought about this, is that, being that this is the residential side of the building, you know, the windows and the, the difference in the size of the windows, the difference in, you know, the, the retail has the large, the large windows and as opposed to the, to the residential, it's more on, you know, in the same scale as the upper windows, but just with a more modernized look, look if you wish, that itself would lend to that. As far as a walk-up, the issue, we were looking at that and thinking, I don't have, the room over here is, we, it looks like we are about a foot off, off of the property line, so technically I get a, you know, a step, but then, a step is not going to, you know, necessarily do all that, so.
Are there steps, when you walk in there, are there steps?
There are going to have, most likely going to have to be steps on the interior, and we've shown that, you know.
So maybe, and again, I, I'm not going to design it, but you know, just to, you know, maybe you depress the door a little bit, you've got a little bit of a, a stoop.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, so that is something, I mean, it may just not be showing, but we didn't, we just kind of put it in there, it could, definitely could be set back a little. I don't want, what we did not want to do, and this is part of what we consciously did, we didn't, I don't know what, I know in other cities and in other towns, I've had issues with homeless or people kind of, you know, going into those areas. And this is a, this is a residential, a private entry, where you really don't want that to happen. So too far back is definitely not going, maybe, you know, a little inset, yes, I understand.
But if you, and if you look across the street, they actually have gates, so, and they're, they're very tasteful, they're, and I understand, yeah, and all it is, is a suggestion.
Absolutely, and we'll take a look at that, we'll, we appreciate that, and we'll take, we'll definitely take a look at that. But, you know, just explaining the thought process that we, we did, we did consider that.
Brian, one more thing that would soften it, put the trees back.
Oh, the trees are going to come in there, I didn't want to show, because then you'll say, hey, where's the building?
That's my job, that's what I do.
Yeah, definitely, the trees are going to be there, the trees are not being removed.
That was my next point, Larry.
See, that we're thinking the same way now.
Trees are not being removed.
And to Larry's point, it, it's not just the trees, it's, it's how can, and again, I know there's not a lot of space, but how can you create environment?
Yeah.
Along the front of the building? And, and not just the trees? And, and there's some, we're, we're exploring some ideas at the, at the borough level and at the environmental commission level about how we handle trees and tree grates, to allow them to flourish a little bit better in a, in a more urban atmosphere, and it's, it's a challenge. But I think those are some things we can talk about, because we've, we've explored the idea of actually a tree grate that extends the entire width of the sidewalk, so it gives the tree a little bit of more room, it's less concrete or, or less pavers, but those are the kinds, and, and you know, is, is there a treatment along the building that can be done that's a little green?
It's a little?
Green.
We can explore it and see what the options are, but you know, we, we definitely will, will, will take this into serious consideration and, you know, see, see what our options are, what we can, you know, improve on that.
And then obviously, I guess more in the nuts and bolts, we've just adopted an affordable housing component, and you'll obviously work with the borough to, to meet those standards. That's, we, we literally just adopted it two weeks ago, so, that's something that we'll, we'll, we'll have to work on together with the borough. And then timeframe, what kind of timing are you looking at?
I want to start yesterday.
So to wait.
To address that, I will say this much, they really pushed me to get this in within, you know, a couple of weeks and said, you know, and then I got the call and saying, we have, we have this meeting, so, we really pushed through.
And I understand that there are, there are issues based upon the borough's timing, we're going to have to look at the whole area to see if it, it can be expanded, an area in need. So, so there's some timing issues that have to be done, but I guess from the, from the standpoint of the window of construction, what, you know, you have all your approvals in place, what does that look like? Is it a year, is it?
Nine to 12 months.
Okay, yeah.
And then I'm sure they're going to fast track as well. Time is money, and you know, this is something, a goal that they have.
They don't like paying interest.
Yeah. Now, so, and one of the other things you had talked about was trying to lease up some of the space prior to the construction beginning, is that still the plan, or are you, kind of, it's liquid right now?
As of right now, if someone begs me, I'm for sure, but I don't think, because we, we shrunk the retail space.
Right.
Because you put the apartments in the back.
Yeah.
So it doesn't pay to bring in as much retail right now if we're doing construction. If we would have left the whole, the whole first floor retail, I would have wanted to do that.
Right.
Now, it really doesn't make sense so much.
Yeah.
Except if someone really.
Well, in smaller space is, is better space at this point.
Right.
I, I do just want to also thank, I, I love the, the look and the lighting of it, coming into town, that that's the entryway to, you know, coming into the town. So, so I do appreciate you putting all that accented lighting on there as well.
Thank you.
Any other board members?
Oh yeah, just a couple of comments, and again, appreciate trying to reutilize the building and, and the architecture that's out there. Couple of things to consider, we understand it's conceptual, I didn't see any, any means for trash interior, inside the building or exterior, so that's something to think about.
May I address that, or is it?
Sure.
Sure, okay. I'm just going to go back to the floor plan. So what we've introduced actually is this room off, right next to the elevator, is a refuse room, where we are proposing, we didn't show it over here, it's just a room right now, but, you know, a trash chute that would go down to the basement and then come, the maintenance could walk it out, you know, towards the back. So it doesn't have to impede and it won't have, I think that addresses that question.
Yep, and then the other thing to think about is the mechanicals, I'm assuming they'll be on the roof or screened from?
It's definitely going to be screened and it's most likely going to have to be on the roof, because this is not conducive to, we don't have enough room on the windows to start putting in window units, and I don't think you want to see that. I mean, it's going to be, I'm sure it's going to be a cost over here, or some, you know, some give and take over here, and we're going to have to, we'll have to have this discussion with our professionals as we go along, but most li, you know, it's going to have, most likely going to be on the roof or a mix probably on the roof and on the floor, but yeah, and definitely going to be screened, you're not going to, it'll be set back at least further from the street, you're not going to be able to.
Yeah, no window units.
I'm not referring to window units, but I'm talking about package underneath, you know, we typically. you know, we typically, sorry, we typically do see, but in this case, we really don't have, I don't think we have the room even for it.
And then something else to consider, I know Mayor Gallagher and Jason talked about the residential side. Maybe the other thought, and again, it's just an idea, is maybe to bring down the brick on that side and not switch over the material, so it doesn't look like it's part of the retail.
So it, it's funny you're asking, but yes, we actually did consider that and we did do a, you know, tried to render it that way, but we just felt that it just somehow this brought the whole, tied the whole thing. I mean, if you can imagine, if this is white and just comes down, it changes the whole look of the whole building. It, it loses the cohesiveness of, of a building as a whole. So that, that's, to that point, that's just an explanation. Again.
Yeah.
I think that's, that's, that, that's a reason for this and that's really, really with that black band, you know, running across the whole perimeter, exterior, the, the street frontage, just ties it all together. But we did want to maintain the difference between retail and residential. And by that, that's how we, we did change some items over here. As a matter of fact, um, it's a little difficult to see. Maybe I can see, one of the things that we did do on this, just to, to address the entry point, we did that, the wood paneling that we have in the front, um, at this, at the retail space, we kept it kind of almost just over the, over the entryway. At the residential portion, we did bring it around. So that'll soften the feel, number one. And number two, it'll also define a different entry and the difference between these two areas, the retail versus the residential, is still defined by the differences of windows, um, the difference in these, these vertical elements that we did introduce and certain elements. Um, and then again, we have the, the awnings, um, for the entrances, just defining that in that sense.
Thank you. And I think the last thing is just be prepared to talk about, uh, parking at the meeting, obviously, because, um, just a quick math, I think we're at, uh, what do you said, forty-two spaces, you think we get? And parking demand seems to be closer to almost eighty.
Al- although, just to address, not that it's, we definitely will address that, but the existing conditions is also is way above that. If I'm not mistaken, on the, on the commercial end, the existing requirements is way above that. So I think we're actually reducing it, but, okay.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Anybody else? I'll just say, I mean, I'm gonna reiterate and just recap saying it is a beautiful project.
Appreciate it.
And I really do feel that you have, you know, I agree with, uh, Mayor Gallagher and, um, Jason on somehow kind of trying to figure out to soften. And I know that you were looking for explanation. I don't have it. I don't have an explanation.
No, we're gonna try that.
Or what I think you should soften and how, but I do feel like something, it just, because it, you've done the job of, of really inviting now. Now I just think it's that softening side, but the, the project itself is a beautiful, you've done a beautiful job of keeping, to Larry's point, I did think the same thing at first when it came to some of the intricacies, the, the cornicing and the, and I think that's just the rendering. You can't really picture it in a flat picture. Um, and, but hearing that you are keeping those above the windows, the intricacy of that, and that it's not, you know, to me, that's good enough. You are keeping it and we just have to see it live one day. Um, because to me, that was one of the things that I really felt, you know, needed to say. And I do understand not drawing so much attention to it, drawing, which kind of pulls away from some of the other stuff, but it allows you to see that historical aspect of the building and the significance of it. So.
Absolutely.
I think it's a beautiful project and you've done a lot in taking in consideration that, knowing that we really wanted to keep this as a centerpiece for the, I mean, the other gateway, the other side of town coming in.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And we will definitely take into consideration these comments and, you know, in, in this next iteration, design is a process, as I always say, you know, it's not a, it, it's, it's iteration as we go along and this is what we need to hear. So, appreciate that.
And thank you for working with us and thank you for investing in Somerville.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, and, and I think you're coming on Monday to Borough Council to, to repeat.
Two minutes, three minutes.
Different crew of people. That's, thank you.
We're just gonna do a two-minute break.
Reminder, you're still on camera and mic.
Oh, you killed them all?
Yeah.
All right. All right, we are back. Thank you for that slight interruption. No, I should thank Larry, cause he was his idea and much needed.
Larry's old.
All right, so we're gonna get back to EV, uh, and we'll resume that conversation. Um, and I apologize, but I did wanna give them the respect of letting them get out of here, cause I have a feeling this won't be another just two minutes. So, um, any other thoughts from what we've heard so far on your thoughts on the direction that you feel you would like to go personally, you know, having the last couple of weeks to think about it?
Looking at the development, the Avalon issue that we dealt with, it almost seems like we've committed ourselves to saying that that's gonna be some sort of standard.
No, and, and I don't think anything we've done up to this point commits us to a standard. We were bound before and we didn't have an ordinance before. So the reason we're here is because we had started discussing wanting some kind of ordinance, which was originally to just not allow them. And we were trying to figure out how, right? And then we had an applicant come before us. We had to stop that conversation. We can't have those conversations and we can't do anything when we have an applicant. So at that point, we're bound on what existing and what is or is not in place. And we did not have an ordinance in place. So we were bound by what the state was requiring and what they had come before us for. Now that applicant is gone, there is no applicant in front of us. We're not bound by that anymore. We're back to regularly resumed of what is it that we want to do to make that recommendation to Borough Council?
Can we pull some of the things that we did agree to on the original application to make it?
We can do whatever we want. That's what we're having this discussion for.
So.
That's what I think we need to allow for additional water standpipes, sprinklers, blankets.
So what?
Can, can, cause I came in the middle of what you were talking about. Can you kind of just encapsulate what?
Yeah, I'll do the thirty-second. Absolutely. So, um, I don't know if addressing EV chargers and parking decks are gonna fully address the problem. I think that, um, the risk of occurrence of EVs based on some lower quality data, as Lisa pointed out, out there, the, the occurrence of EV fires is low. Okay. So I think rather than focusing on moving EV chargers out of decks or a different position in a deck, I think we should focus on, Larry, you're, you're right on. Where my head was at, it was taking the Avalon requirements that they, they defined in there, which I thought were very high for person's safety. And then taking the fire marshal's, um, opinion and letter, which aligned relatively well with the Avalon work that was done, right? And then defining additionally, defining requirements and minimum standards for EV chargers to make sure they're of quality, properly constructed and have the right electrical systems to reduce the chance of fire, additional fires occurring. And then, um, obviously, I don't know, I don't believe this can go in the ordinance, but then funding additional, in addition to the ten K that was provided by Avalon, additional training and equipment for the fire department to properly deal with these type of issues, to make sure they're safe. That's, that's my gist.
So I, and I, I like where that's going. And, you know, I, I think we also have to look at this, not just, when we say deck, there's actually, we really, I think, need to splice this a little bit, cause we've dealt with parking lots, surface lots, and the proximity of charging. That's one issue. We've, we dealt with a parking deck which, which had residential above it, which I, you know, I, I have no problem saying no more, you know, that, that, something like that. I don't, I don't know that we should have EV charging, uh, or even EV underneath.
So you're saying with, with something above it?
Yeah.
So a parking structure versus a deck?
Well, a standalone parking structure with no residential or commercial above it.
I think of that as a deck. So, okay, so, all right.
So, so, yeah, so if we wanna do it for sake of, so it's a deck, a standalone deck, a, a podium deck with, with commercial or residential space above it, a surface lot, and we also have residential. So, you know, if, if we're gonna look at an ordinance that deals with EV, then, then I, I don't know that one size fits all, because what, what Chris is talking about versus what we've talked about in the past, I think there's components of each that might fit very well. So the standard that we've created, I shouldn't say, the standard that was, uh, established for this deck here in this project, um, to me, that may be a good approach for a standalone deck. And then, you know, where do we put them? If we're going to allow them on the lower levels, does, does what the standard is for this approved site plan here, does that kick in? Or do we create something different and say, it's gotta be on the top floor? Then for a deck that has commercial or residential above it, that to me is, is, is the really bigger push of an ordinance that really has some teeth to it.
And you're, you're thinking just around parking of EVs, not necessarily the EV chargers or not?
I think it's both.
Both? Okay. Okay. So, how do you deal, how, how would we deal with, so, again, rough numbers, increase, decrease by fifty, a hundred percent doesn't matter, five percent of EVs in the car on the road, registered cars?
Yeah.
Quick Google, use Google.
Yeah.
Um, so right now, that's the number. That's a certain percent. So every deck, you could assume five percent plus or minus of parking in there, right? In five years, ten years, that number's gonna go, what are we gonna do with all these cars and where to put them?
It's a good question.
How are we gonna treat the EV owners, right? Like, go in this lot over here on the other side of the, the highway and park, right? And that's gonna create its own issue. So how do we address that with a ordinance that could?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know. It's, it's a great question.
So I, I.
Building it for the future.
I wanna kinda address that, cause I think that was some of the thought process, you know, to Jason's point earlier. I know, at least from my perspective, when it came to the chargers, it's about attracting. And it's about connecting a potential hazard to a, something that can ignite that hazard, right? So, and, and we've talked about this. I don't disagree that it is actually the vehicle that is the danger, right? The batteries themselves. Let's not say the vehicle, cause it's the damaged batteries or damage to the vehicle that is affecting the batteries that is causing the issue for a car to ignite, minus having a car accident, okay? Cause that is slightly, that is, you know, a different scenario. In, introducing the charging to it is what has always concerned me. You're not mitigating the concern of a potential EV fire by adding the element of saying, oh, wait, we really don't want you here, but hey, come here and charge overnight. And to me, that doesn't make that sense. And, you know, as it comes to, I will say, and I'm not going to disagree with you, cause I made the statement, there isn't much data out there and you're not going to find much data. Um, and the reason being is they only just started collecting that data. Up until, I think it was twenty-four, they did not distinguish between an EV fire and a combustible engine fire. And any of the data you see that was done by private agencies, not by public entities who are, so fire departments just here now are bound to report when they have a fire, what it is, what was the cause, right? So car fire was a car fire. It was, there was no distinguishing it. So that is why the data is not there. And that is some of the frustration when we've, when I have, and I know some of the other experts who are trying, when I say subject matter experts, I'm saying in that industry, have reached out to try to get data. That's the frustrating part. It's not there yet. And unfortunately, we're not gonna have that data. All we know is from what you can talk to, to experience, people who are experiencing, you know, on a daily, weekly or monthly basis. That unfortunately, isn't gonna change much. And that is a known fact, right? So again, they brought data to us that said, oh, it's the vehicles. Okay, then why do we go on to attract those vehicles even more? And, you know, nobody's saying that, um, oh, the chargers standing there by themselves are going to ignite. I've never believed that. It's the charging of the vehicle at the time that is causing it. So you're adding that element, right? Our, in public safety, we like to say we can mitigate risks as much as possible. And to me, it counter, is counterintuitive by adding the element of that charging station. This is my personal opinion. I am not, you know, in any way saying right, wrong or indifferent. The other thing is, we talk about how to fight EV fires. They are learning that every single day, because every single day, they're being introduced to new aspects of it. A study just came out showing fire blankets are not, I just removed them from all of my hazmat teams. They are not allowed to be used, because they are allowing the combustible gases underneath the fire blanket to now cause an explosion risk. And that, so that a lot of the firefighters are saying, yep, nope, no longer using this. So again, we added a risk, right, without even knowing it. And I think that's my fear with this world, is we're trying to solve a problem we don't have the answer to. And in the end, it just comes down to public safety. So my perspective is, what do you feel is the safest way forward, not having accurate data, not having complete data, to say we are truly looking at the best interest of public safety? And when I say public safety, I don't just mean the residents. I mean our firefighters, our law enforcement and first responders who have to go in there. I see you going. Go ahead, Barry.
Yeah, I'm like, getting ready to go. I was gonna bring up the, uh, blankets and, you know, we see all the data's changing fast. Two weeks after, we had two experts tell us the blankets were great. The, uh, Fire Safety Training Institute, it's at a national bulletin. These are causing very fatal explosions. So the data's really changing. This is an extreme take and I know it may not go well, but I think, in my opinion, sidestep the charging issue, what about not allowing EVs in any parking structure, period? The charging kind of is a moot point. You're not gonna put the, no builder's gonna install a charger in a deck that's not gonna be used. They're gonna, it's just a waste of money. The enforcement of that, I don't know. That's, that's a good question, but it's, it's an extreme take, but I think it solves all our concerns.
But is it realistic? So, so if it's not realistic, we have to move.
Right. And, and I don't know, would that be a fire violation, a zoning violation? I, I don't know what that enforcement mechanism would be, but.
I think, so if, if we did, so let's, let's play that through. So we have an ordinance that doesn't allow EV in deck. Makes sense. Owners of these buildings and the developers are gonna be like, you're kidding me. You, these people that are trying to rent my building, younger folks that are EV conscious and environmentally conscious, they're gonna be like, no, I have an EV car. I can't even park there, right? So how do we get around that type of situation where that could be an economic issue for developers and businesses?
Put surface parking in.
Okay.
Where? That's, that's, and is it retro?
Damned if you don't.
So you.
Correct. I know you're great. I'm not, it's definitely not easy.
So let's look. We have a county deck. We have the DiSappio deck.
I don't see how you'd make it retro.
We, we have the ShopRite deck.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I don't think we could make it retro.
It, 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 it doesn't, I don't, I don't know that it works. And, and to Chris's point, I mean, I understand it and, and from the safety standpoint, you know, that's, it, it's solved, it is. But from an infrastructure standpoint, it, it won't work. It just, we don't have the space. It just, it's, we don't have enough surface in order to be able to sustain that with a growing EV population. So, so it kind of backtracks. And so, so maybe we start to take it incrementally. So, so it kinda backtracks, and, so, so maybe we start to take it incrementally, in terms of, let's look at the surface parking first. How, we, we did this over on Fairview Avenue, we said, no, 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 you cannot put it up against the building. So let's establish the parameters of how far EV charging needs to be away from a structure in a surface parking lot. And, is it separated from other automobiles? Is there an EV section for parking?
Bless you.
So, you know, to, to Barry's point, you now, are we separating the EV cars from the gasoline, diesel, or whatever, you know, the fossil fuel cars?
Combustible.
Combustible, thank you.
Very likely.
Yeah.
So, listen, I hear what you're saying.
Yeah, devil's advocate, that's good, that's...
I'll hear, I hear what you're saying, but I will tell you that even in the fire that was down in, was it Virginia? Where was the airport one? Ah, wherever, you can go on YouTube, it was just, was it Florida?
Florida.
Jacksonville, thank you. Started by an EV fire, an EV, one EV vehicle. Don't know what the issue is, I don't know if it was charging or not, let's just say it wasn't even charging. That entire deck is completely condemned at this point, right? One, and I'm sure it wasn't in the middle of five EVs, right? So the problem becomes, again, let's go back to mitigating and introducing something. So to Mayor's point, I don't think we're going to solve and say, going, we're not, I don't think we're gonna be able to go, because I'm not gonna say I disagree with you Barry, but I think that's why I'd always been focused on specifically the EV chargers, right? Because EV chargers are, are at least a way to mitigate inviting it, right? You're not gonna stop owners, but at least you're going to mitigate the fact of saying, we're not, we don't want you here, all in this area, throughout our deck, charging now and adding an element of risk to that, to that parking structure. And when I say a structure, I mean a deck enclosed, open, I don't really care, I'm just gonna use it as a general term. And, I, I think that, we start talking about trying to separate them, and I think we're going to get so much into the weeds, we're never gonna do it, and we're gonna make something that's an unrealistic expectation, that's never gonna be able to be enforced. And that isn't what, I don't think that's what any of us intended. And I don't disagree that we're not gonna solve this in all one piece, but I don't wanna keep kicking this can down. We, as a board, had a major safety concern that was before us, for the last five months we've been talking about this, and we had to stop for two because we had an applicant. The more we continue to try to find the right solution, we're gonna have another applicant before us, and then we're going to be bound to stop those conversations again, and maybe more that it does come out. And I'm not in any way trying to push anybody in one direction or another, I just don't want this conversation to stop. We can't keep saying, we're gonna keep kicking it down the can, let's keep looking at it, let's keep looking at it.
Well, then, that's, that's why I'm saying, let's take it incrementally. Let's, let's start with the low hanging fruit, because we're looking at it globally, and we keep kinda touching on the small stuff, on, on individual points. Let's take it incrementally, and that may lead us down a path. The challenge we have here is that the state has a mandate of, was it fifteen percent?
Yeah.
That's the problem.
On site, it is not required in a deck.
It's, correct, but, but here's the problem. Given a built-out community, we're now boxing, if, if we create these strictures, we are boxing ourselves out from any further growth, because we don't have the space, which is exactly what happened here. We don't, it came in the middle, at the tail end of a project, and, and we don't have the space to, to have that demand that says, you can't put it here. If we were a, a brand-new suburban community, we, we could do whatever we wanted. You could, you, you could have it all surface. We're not that, that suburban community. So we have a challenge that nobody else has, and, and, and I think it's healthy for us to have this conversation, because it's, it's, it's a great balance of, you know, we're starting with eliminate all parking of EVs in decks, which is, is great for a suburban community, but I think everybody realizes that can't happen here. So, so balancing it and understanding that with a state mandate of fifteen percent, we have to come up with that golden idea that says, this is gonna work.
I mentioned last, the last meeting, that we have to consider the weight of these vehicles, it's a lot, they're a lot heavier than the standard deck, so...
Yep.
If somebody comes in and says, we're putting a deck in, wait a minute, are you putting an enhanced deck that can handle five EV cars up on the roof? That didn't have, that not nowhere near that, we need to incorporate that if we're gonna say EVs on the roof, to get there.
So, so let's go to engineering and say, are there new standards for the weight of...
They're coming out.
They are?
Yeah.
Yeah, see, again, it's evolving.
If we go back to the square one, does the board feel that the ordinance should be modified in some way?
I think we all agree on that.
Yeah.
Okay, then, maybe I should put a pen to paper, and you guys could bleed all over at the next meeting. That's what's gonna happen, but to get to, to have something to, to follow, incorporate everyone's comments.
Well, and Mike, I, I think for sake of moving it along, as Lisa's talking about, separate it.
Right.
Separate it into residential? Because, because we gotta deal with that as well. Do we want people plugging inside a garage that's attached to a house?
So, I will tell you, there is a, is it uniform construction, which one is it, that's requiring it on, I, yeah.
Receptacle in the garage.
Receptacle, so...
So, so it's, it's exactly counter to what you're saying.
Yep.
So, what are we doing?
So here's the point, and I think... Yeah, so... So, there are certain things to that point, we're bound by already. And again, what aren't we bound by? And the one thing that we're not bound by right now is looking at the decks and inside the decks, because right now, there is no law whatsoever that says you must incorporate them into the decks. Because I don't disagree with you. Maybe some of that incremental is, okay, standalone decks, what do we wanna do in standalone?
Yes.
Or if we already know what we wanna do with a deck that has residential above it, right? That I don't have a problem with. That one piece about the residential, we are not allowed, we can't get, we cannot say and get more strict, or less strict...
Yes.
Than, or whatever it is, I, you know what I'm saying.
Yeah.
We can't, because there is an existing code that says you have to.
So, so let's separate it out, I mean, if everybody agrees, let's separate it out. Let's look at surface lot as one standard, standalone deck as another standard, and when I say standalone, it can be attached to a building...
Nothing above.
But nothing above it.
Right.
It's, it's, all, all the levels are deck, there's nothing above...
Like, like the Desapio deck.
Yes.
For example.
And, and then a, a, we'll call it a podium deck, that has stuff above it, right? And that be, that creates three standards, that I think one or two of them, we can probably tackle pretty easy. And then the third is the one that I think we're kinda having more of a, a hiccup.
Bite-sized manageable chunks to discuss, deal, and resolve, I like that.
So, and I, and I do want you guys to understand, I had, over the last two weeks, I've gotten five to six phone calls from two other planning, planning board chairs from other municipalities outside of the county, and fire officials who have applicants that are about to come before them, and they hear what we're talking about here, and they're asking how we're addressing it. So, this is not just a Somerville issue, we might be unique to Brian's point, everybody is concerned about this, and everybody is looking for a way, I've already said, hey, listen, you got it, most of them didn't even realize, the same thing, like, we didn't realize that there was an ordinance that you could update, right? So they're on the right, in the right direction, but they are all very, every single person I talked to is very concerned about this. This is not, this isn't a unique thing that we're looking at saying, we're the only ones concerned with this, we are, it's just, we are really the only ones that are probably in-depth, really trying to get this tackled.
They're waiting for your answer so that they can...
Oh, they said, well, when you come up with it, can you send it to me? I was like, hopefully you come up with it first.
So I was speaking with a developer last night, and, who actually watched our planning board presentation from this developer here, and he was laughing, he said, I'm doing a project in the Chicago area, and he said, I get a call from, from the gentleman who's heading the project up, and he goes, you're not gonna believe this, they're having the same discussion that Somerville had a month ago, out in the Chicago area, it's, it's EVs and parking lots.
Good.
Yeah.
Can I ask a question? Is it, and I, I totally agree with everything, and I think having a jumping off point for everybody to start talking about is a great idea, separating it to pieces, is it your thought that this is a standard that we're gonna put forth, and then there can be relief requested from that standard? Like, is that the mindset?
Can you ask for relief from an ordinance?
Sure.
Yeah.
So then, yeah, I mean, obviously, if they're going to ask, it's just like any other variance...
I, I, my feeling is, in extenuating circumstances, yes, but something like this, which is life safety, I think it's incumbent that we make that standard, and we kinda hold to it, unless it's some...
Oh, I'm not saying we wouldn't hold to it, but they can ask for any variance they want, we can't stop them from asking.
And I guess that's, that's kinda my point, because I think that one of the issues that we're trying to address is, address the life safety, address the concerns, but yet not prohibit any future development or redevelopment within the town. So I think that there, we could think about putting some language in that basically says, in the event that you're going to apply for relief from any of these provisions, you have to prove to the board that you have tried every single other option. Show us your designs, show us your, your different options, so you've tried to do this, and you're showing that but for this relief, your project is essentially not going to happen. Some, just, just off the top of my head, but something along those lines.
And I, I like that, because to, to the Mayor's point, you know, we're not trying to stop it, right? We're not trying to stop the growth in here, we're trying to make it safe growth with the, with, and, and it's, it isn't fair to applicants, that's why I would like to get, I don't want applicants to keep coming before us, and they're like, well, we didn't know that, you didn't tell us that, well, it's in... And, that's something that we're gonna struggle with, that's why we struggled with Avalon, and, and we felt for them, because, right, you know what, we, we did just start having the conversations, but they designed something based on what we had then, right? And I think that's, to Cara's point, if we can give them that advanced, hey, listen, this is how, what our standard is, please try, you know, understand that. And then, yes, if, I mean, listen, if a developer came and proved beyond a reasonable doubt, then we still could decide whether we wanna give them variance or not.
I mean, the standard's gonna be the same for granting that relief or anything else, but if we could show what we expect in order to...
Yeah.
Feel comfortable doing it, then again, I think that kinda helps you and gives them guidance too.
Yeah.
The letter we got from the fire marshal, item six and seven specifically talk about fire blankets, this was from May sixteenth, you said just like a week ago...
And that's what we're trying to say, Larry, the data is...
This has to be adjusted also, because he doesn't need, this changed since his...
The facts and data on EVs are ever-changing, hour by hour, minute by minute, and that's the problem, that's the problem we're all going to face. We can come with facts today, right? And, you know, and, and say, and then, because, I'll be honest with you, I was the first one that talked about EV blankets, and I was so excited, I got my hazmat team, we bought them, we were all ready, and then this data comes out, right? So, it's, even for the experts that are dealing with these, the data is just not there, the, the evidence is just because this is such a new issue. So, yes, unfortunately, and that is the issue the fire officials themselves are having, which is why they're struggling in when they're trying to make recommend, these fire officials that reached out within Somerset County and outside of Somerset County, they said, we're struggling because there's not anything we can really, when we're trying to make a recommendation, we try to hold it by, hey, here's all your facts. And, they know in their gut what they should be saying, but the facts are not all there, the, the statistics, let's say, right? The nuts, the bolts, the meats and potato that they can hang their hat on, isn't there. And they're torn between that, you know, the, it's a dilemma. Yeah, it's, it's the ethics of it, of what they feel versus what they ethically are bound by in their position, so.
So we have a plan?
Yeah.
We have a plan, I'll come up with a policy statement, and we'll break it up, the existing ordinance, break it up into the different categories, and some might be a policy, others will be, this is the requirement, and then, the requirements can't be made, that would be a variance, and the rest, it's to the extent possible. For example, the residential policy statement, put the receptacle closest to garage door to encourage charging on the driveway as opposed in the garage, to the extent possible. That's the policy statement, how, this is far as you can go with it. And other areas, there might be more requirements that if relief is granted, it would be a C variance.
Alright, I don't have any other comments, I think we've had enough, so I don't have any other comments. I am going to open up the meeting to the public for comments on anything, questions. Hearing none, we'll close public comment, and I would like a motion to adjourn.
So moved.